Are we going to do that? And then to be able to go ahead and do that? Because that was the kind of thing that we always expected staff to do when we had staff to do it. And now we're saying, well, we don't have staff, so we need someone else to do it. Yes, Councilman Fleming.
You referred to our goals. If you look at our goals here.
Right.
Actually, the last item on the goal sums it up pretty well. It should have been probably the first, but it says, "Market the advantages of living and working in Troy through partnerships." How do we market those advantages? We talk about we've got a great place to live and work. What we're talking about is how do we communicate that and market that? But it says it, the last item on our goals right there. It's under attract and retain business development, but it goes beyond that. It's talking about incorporating building a sense of community. What advantages do we have here? What makes Troy different than the next community? Why move to Troy? What do we have to offer? And we could all individually start to make a list of things. It's the businesses, you know, that we have, the great shopping that we have, the access to I-75 that winds through Troy. There's so many things, but how do we package that? That's what we're talking about. How do we package and market? We just keep it that simple?
Mm-hmm.
I know that's oversimplifying it, but that's what we're sitting here trying to do. We all know individually things that we can talk about Troy in a positive light. And I agree with Mayor Protem Curwen. We've got this bad attitude, and it's permeating the whole community and all around Michigan. We need to change that, and it's up to us to change it. You know, because we've allowed ourselves to be this way. And I think that it's enough's enough. We have to be -- when we leave here, we have to be talking positive about Troy, all the positive things, not negative. We need a tick list of all the positive things. Start listing them down. And I tell you what, it would be a lengthy, lengthy list. Sure, we can all get negative and talk about all the things that are going wrong, but let's just focus on what's right with Troy, not what's wrong. And market that to our people, to attract younger couples here. And we're not going to get younger couples if we don't get the businesses. So we better incorporate the businesses in getting the right businesses here and making this a place that businesses want to come. That's easier said than done, but it has to start.
But they also want amenities to go.
Absolutely. And you know what? You get businesses here.
We do have beautiful parks.
You fund that. What funds those amenities?
Right.
It's the revenue stream you'll get. It's not we're going to be having to cut budgets every time. It's, well, we've got money to do what we need to do. But we're going to have to, we're going to have to get really proactive here. And I know we're not giving purchasing much direction, but that's my two cents. We really need to focus on marketing advantages of living and working in Troy to attract businesses. And if you get businesses, you get the families. If you don't have the business, and you're just going to be a bedroom community, that's a problem. That's not what Troy is about, because we've got too many empty buildings here that need to be filled up.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem Curwen.
I agree, you know, with what I hear, the idea of a go-to place.
Yes.
Being the go-to place. It's what we talked about when we visited this. And again, look at the date on the vision and goals. That was February.
Yes.
And that's when we handed it off and said, "Make it happen." So there is a level of frustration here. So from the standpoint of council, in big-picture terms, I don't think you're going to get more than looking at our statement and goals. It comes with a series of strategies, and we've talked about that, hitting multiple sectors with multiple strategies. All of that will come inclusive, but I don't think you're going to see us iterate more than some of those tactics that were written on that sheet. So, you know, if that's a huge stumbling block, City Manager, I don't know what more to say. We recognize that we have a problem. We recognize that we're unable to do anything to get out of it without an outside help. So get us some help here.
I did. You don't like it. So I'm asking for specificity in terms of what you want. I mean, I could take your vision and goals and saying, please build a, you know, a strategy and a tactical plan around the visions and goals to make us look good and see what we get.
Well, City Manager, it sounded like what came from Councilmember Beltramey was the importance of a transparent piece. And that transparent piece that Councilmember Slater mentioned included going out for bids. And that sounded like it needed to be an RFP or bids specifically. The RFP process does sound not only longer, but if we have to have more input on it, I feel that we're going to be hitting this brick wall. There is a sense of urgency here, because we have meeting after meeting like tonight, where we hear misinformation for up to an hour.
Sure.
From our residents. So we have a communication issue here. So I don't know if just reworking option B.
Mm-hmm. Councilwoman Gass, did you ask?
I just wanted to point out that I don't necessarily think that what was brought before us today is not in the vein of what we're looking for. I think just, my opinion anyway, was that there was discussion about other companies and if there are other companies that are interested. I think we would just feel more comfortable if we were able to have a discussion about what they could provide or see what they could provide. And that's something that we're dealing with in terms of what we hear from residents constantly. And it's usually the voices that are loudest.
Mm-hmm.
So we hear them more often, and we hear them more frequently. And when we're trying to work very hard to build that trust with our residents, because we want them to see all the things that we're going to be providing with new streams of information and an outside person that I'm hoping through the RFP will be able to get someone that's going to be able to work with our staff so that they're not going to be replacing what we have. They're going to be able to work with the staff that we have, give them direction, and provide new ideas based on information that they're gathering from the community. I just, I think it's that piece that we want to be able to say that we had a discussion about it. And quite frankly, what we ultimately pick could look very much like this. It could even be this person. I just think it's the process that we're looking to refine a little bit, or at least myself, anyway.
The reason that I wanted three options was just precisely predicated on what you had said, based on the conversations that we had last meeting. I internalized a sense of urgency. It is a professional service.
Rightfully so.
And so we had a contract developed if you wanted, if you were so inclined to adopt it. If you had a level of discomfort and you wanted to have an RFP, that was option B. I think what I'd like to do, and Susan doesn't beat me up after the meeting, but I'd like to come back next meeting essentially with the RFP, based on what we've heard tonight, because I think the worst thing I could do as manager is send this out with an RFP based on my interpretation of what individuals want, not necessarily what the governing body wants. There's a huge difference, especially with this governing body. And to get concurrence from the governing body that, yeah, we like this RFP, or, John, Susan, change it to say this or that. And I'll be happy to do that and bring it back. Okay, Susan?
Do you want a resolution to bring back an RFP?
No, I'll just bring back an RFP.
Okay.
If you can't give me the specifics of what we want tonight, if you don't mind, we'll glean what we think we heard from the governing body.
Okay.
And say, this is what we'd like to go out for. Are you okay with it? And if you just say, yes, we're okay with it, then we'll, the clock will start ticking, and we'll try to fast-track this. I would like to ask one question, though, if I may. There's a difference when you go out with an RFP to go out to Planet Earth or shortlist. If you go out to Planet Earth, you could get 60 or 70 RFPs, and it would take a long time to go through them. We know there's only a handful of firms in the area that are qualified to do this. Would it be okay if we shortlisted the RFPs to those qualified firms?
Councilwoman Beltramey, you asked for the floor.
In answer to that question, I don't have a huge problem with a shortlist. I think there are probably seven firms that I can think of, that, many of them right here in southeast Michigan. I do want to say one thing, and you heard from my diatribe, I'm sorry. I have an issue with metrics. How are you going to measure? If this is a month-to-month contract, at what point do we measure to know that the path the consultant has taken us down is successful? And if you cannot tell me exactly what that metric is, how will you decide what it is as part of the RFP process? Because there's no accountability. Quite honestly, in this, it says, "Develop a metric," and then it says, "administer a program." Anybody can administer. It's, can you get it to work? You know, anybody can administer, even a failing program. So I want some exposition of metrics in that proposal. It's important for us to know what the payback is, what the measurement is. And quite honestly, Pure Michigan doesn't have that. There's no way to tell if it's working or not.
And we'll also be happy to incorporate anyone, any firm that you give us in the shortlist.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Horlak.
I actually appreciate what the City Manager is doing here with respect to making sure that, you know, there's proper direction for him to go on. And I think that, you know, sometimes it takes an extra step to do that, and I think that's fine. I'm not sure how comfortable I am with a shortlist, because I think that the RFP itself, as well as the parameters of our budget, will actually self-select that list. But at the very least, if we are going to have a shortlist, I just want to have an adequate number. I think that there should be an adequate number of responses so that there's variety in the proposal, so that there is actually something to evaluate. And that number is probably somewhere between at least three and five of actual proposals that come back. I mean, you could have a shortlist of seven, but only two or three might decide that they want to take the time, because, you know, it's a bit of an effort on their part to prepare something like this, as Mr. Serpolis has mentioned to us as well. I think the other thing to keep in mind, too, is, are we trying to market Troy, or are we trying to market the city government? And I think there is a distinction there that is very important to keep in mind, because when we are marketing Troy, the city, there are things that are going on that are external to the city government. It includes the city government, but there are other things as well. Because I've heard some comments that the concerns relate to the city government. Well, that's different than marketing the city of Troy as an entity, so, or I should say, as a place. And I think that's something we need to actually consider. And at any rate, I think it's also important for me to explain that I don't, and I alluded to this before, I don't believe that this is a proper allocation of financial resources. I think you can have a goal, and I think you can work to achieve that goal, but I don't know that you need to take valuable financial resources at this time to achieve that goal in this way. However, if you're going to do it, I think you do need to do it through the RFP process. So at least, I'm happy with that part of it.
Well, I'd like us to take a break, but I want to answer about, I think we want to market Troy. We're not marketing the government. So that was a good question, though, that you asked, because it made us focus in here. And there's a lot of things that are not under our purview, but that do make up this community. So I think that's important to do. Do you have enough information, Mr. Zerly?
I'd like to.
Need a resolution?
Well, I don't need a resolution. If I, you know, I'll come back with an RFP.
Okay.
Next meeting. But I would like to ask Mrs. Leerstein if she requires anything else, because she's going to be the point person in drafting the RFP, if I may. Anything you need, Susan? From the governing body?
No, I don't think so. I mean, stipulated visions and goals aren't important, and we can certainly develop the RFP around those targets already. So, no, we'll go forward with the best we can.
Okay. All right. Can we take a five-minute break and then come back? This item about meeting with the businesses will come after the consent items, right? Not, or does it come after the regular?
Regular business item?
Pardon?
Before you adjourn.
No.
No, this is new on the table. So maybe you think about.
If it's a regular business item, can we do it real quick right now?
Well, let's do it after the, right after the break, we'll do that business item, all right? Bye. We're back in session, and I move to suspend the rules.
Support.
To bring up the item for, that's on the, the resolution that's on the back of the sheet. Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Curwen, that we suspend the rules. Discussion, the vote, Mrs. Stewart?
Councilwoman Horlak?
Yes.
Curwen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Schilling?
Yes.
Beltramey?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. The resolution is before us, and it looks like, from just some of the comments that a couple people made, that the best date may be the June 22nd one. How do you feel about that? We have a meeting on the 20th of June, a regular council meeting. That would make it Wednesday. And, okay?
Okay.
All right. Somebody want to move that resolution and insert the June 22nd from 10:00 to 12:00?
Resolved that Detroit City Council hereby schedules a meeting with members of the business community on June 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., 2011, at Troy.
In the city council boardroom.
City Council Boardroom for the purposes of discussing ways to keep Troy economically viable in both the short and long term.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramey, that we approve the resolution as read, with the insertion of the date and the time. Discussion of the motion? Mr. Zerly?
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes. Why, you can't do it Wednesday?
Well, I made a mistake. I have a commitment on Wednesday. I'm sorry. I mean.
I think I do, too.
Wednesday?
21st?
22nd?
22nd.
22nd.
22nd is a Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. What about the 23rd? A Thursday?
Okay.
Can you go with the 23rd?
Can we do it at 10:00?
23rd at 10, from 10:00 to 12:00?
Mayor.
So 9:30?
Councilwoman Horlak?
I can't make it that day. I've got a CPE.
Okay.
Is the 21st out?
Sorry.
The 21st?
It's early, right after our meeting, so we'd have to behave ourselves, but.
Could we do, can't we do the 21st, but do the later time?
You can do whatever. Again, my, I'm sorry for the short letter that I had written. You can pick any time you'd like.
Okay.
A date not even on, it would be important to have all seven people there.
Can we do the 21st from 10:00 a.m. till 12:00 p.m.?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just in response to the manager's last comment, it's important that you all be there. If that's the case, honestly, it would have been really helpful to have this at home, to have had this email to us earlier in the day when we all had our calendars. So if that really is the intent, I guess my suggestion is hold, as they would say in Shakespearean times, and consider instead doing it via email. We can see now that the date's moving farther and farther. We have a council meeting before then. So I guess I would suggest that.
Well, you just suggested the 21st, the day after our council meeting.
How much posting? Well.
It's two weeks off.
You can do it. Honestly, I can't tell from looking at this whether all seven of us can be there or not, looking at this calendar and pretending that it can work or not. I don't know.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Horlak?
I think Councilwoman, I mean, Mayor Protem Curwen has a good point. Perhaps we could, tomorrow, we could all submit our availability, and perhaps you could, if you wouldn't mind, just call the meeting.
Do it as a special posting.
Yeah.
Do it as a special meeting. You don't need to have, you know, the weeks in that case.
So would everybody?
Take no action.
All right. Would everybody look at their calendars?
Yeah.
You already indicated you can't come on the 23rd. I think that we should try for all of us, but if all of us can't be there, we should just go with who we can have.
Madam Mayor.
You know? Councilwoman Beltramey?
We have a motion on the floor.
I know.
That we have to do something.
Right.
Okay. Madam Mayor, one more time.
Yes.
At this point, though, we're really only looking at the 21st, but changing it from 10:00 to 12:00.
Until 12:00, right.
Right. But who can't make the 21st? Thought I heard. Okay.
Can you make the 21st? Councilwoman Horlak?
No, I think I can.
It was the 23rd he couldn't make.
I think Mary's the one who's not sure.
Okay.
Mary, are you okay on the 21st?
Well, again, I agree with Councilmember Horlak that we would not take action. We could postpone this or just get rid of it. And then just post it as a special meeting. You don't really need that much time if you did it that way.
Pardon?
We need to get rid of it. It's not a valid time, anyway, so just vote this down.
Vote it down. Yeah.
Vote it down. Okay.
Vote it down, and then we'll just email it back.
It's been discussed.
All right. The motion on the floor is the one for the 22nd.
All right.
So moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramey for the 22nd. So we're going to have the vote and vote it down, and then everybody's going to look at their calendar. All right. Mrs. Bittner, the vote?
Mayor Protem Curwen?
No.
Councilmember McGinnis?
No.
Slater?
No.
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Horlak?
No.
Motion fails. Now, what we're going to do is look at our calendars, email back, and then I'll just send it, we'll just do a special meeting thing, Mrs. Bittner will send out. What do we have?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Beltramey?
If it comes to pass that seven of us cannot make ourselves available any time on the 21st, do you want us to go into the next week for potential dates? Okay.
Councilwoman Gass?
I know we need less notice if we're going to do it this way, but I think the other key component would be to make sure that the business stakeholders are able to participate, so.
That's where we can see.
That's why you got the date.
So I would like to make sure that this is a priority. If we're going to send dates, we need to do it in the morning.
That, that's where we got these dates from, is from indicating.
Not a lot, but.
Which means if you change eight to 10, to 10 to 12, you might have a problem.
He said we could do it later time, but.
But you can, you know, I'll try to get whoever I can to attend, because we've, you know, over the past eight months, we spoke to a lot of businesses.
Right.
But I would like tomorrow to advise them of the date and time.
Okay.
And get who we can.
Okay. Tomorrow morning, we're going to all let you know, okay?
10:00 to 12:00 is good for me. Okay.
What?
All right.
Councilman Slater, what?
Nope.
Talk to myself.
All right. Okay, tomorrow morning. Mr. Zerly, put me down, yes, tomorrow morning. I can tell you right now, I don't need to tell you tomorrow morning.
That's what I was doing.
Okay.
I'm, yes, you're good, too, Dave, for the 22nd? Thanks.
All right.
21st.
Okay. The consent. Okay, the consent agenda. Anybody want any items removed?
Oh, I do have one.
J2.
J11.
What was that, J2?
J2.
J11. Any others? Council, excuse me, Councilman Howrak?
Um, is that J, all of the J2s, A, B, and C?
It's just J2C.
Okay, I would concur, but, um, I was gonna say J5 and J14.
By the way, on, what was that?
J5 and J14.
The minutes have been corrected on the 16th. Did you see the corrected ones?
No, I did not.
Okay, the corrected ones were done online. I caught the error on Thursday and Friday, they corrected it. The vote, uh, the, uh, no, there was a, a change in, uh, I moved the resolution and they had Councilman Howrak seconding it, and it wasn't, it was Councilman Slater. Then there was the, um.
Wait, wait to get to that.
All right, okay, all right. We need a resolution to approve all the items except for J2, J5, J11, and J14.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Beltramini?
I would resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of J2C, J5, J11, and J14, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as indicated. Do you want me to repeat all those again, Mrs. Bittner?
We've got them.
Pardon?
We've got them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Motion passes. Okay, J2C. Who requested that?
I did, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to correct the minutes for the June 16th meeting on E1 Resolution B on page 17 of those minutes.
Yeah, open mine for some reason.
Change, uh.
The minutes don't open here.
Change the yes vote from Fleming to Kerwin.
What, which item was it?
It's E.
I know, but say what the resolution is.
It's.
Can't open ours.
E1 Resolution B.
I can open mine.
We can't open. No, we can.
I can.
I can.
Some of us can't open our minutes to see what that item is, so why don't you say?
I looked at it.
What it is.
At home, and basically the resolution was a vote on the budget, the Resolution B on the budget that passed.
Right.
And the yes votes reflected five people voting yes, and it showed Fleming voting yes without Kerwin's name on there. Fleming should be changed to, to Kerwin.
Fleming was listed as a yes and a no vote, right?
Considered as a yes and a no vote. I didn't do vote.
Yeah, it needs to be corrected.
Needs to be corrected, changed.
All right.
And I made the clerk aware of this, but I'm just doing it for the record here.
All right, I didn't catch that one, I caught some other things. The others have been corrected, okay. With that correction, would you?
Yes.
Move the minutes then?
Resolve that Detroit City Council hereby approves, uh, the June, June 16th.
No, May?
Oh, it's May. May, excuse me. I'm a month ahead.
Yeah.
May 16th meeting minutes, item E1 Resolution B to reflect Kerwin voting yes and Fleming voting no.
Discussion, oh, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution with the change in the minutes as indicated.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Howrak?
Yeah, you know, I'm looking on page 139 of the agenda, and there seems to be, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I, I have to pull, I've got my other agenda from last week or the last meeting, but there, there's a number missing under the capital fund expend, expenditure, excuse me, expenditures for the library. I thought there was a number that was supposed to be in there.
I can't get to the, here. What page, Councilman Howrak?
139.
139.
I gotta click all the way down here.
Good doors.
All right.
735. And then, yeah.
That's what it should be.
You see where it is? It's blank in there? I don't have my, my papers at home from last week.
735, 510.
Pardon?
There it is.
106, 250.
It's page 139, but I don't have my page from the last one.
I've got last week's up, but I can't open this week, so it doesn't do me any good to compare them.
I had to click on the pages till I got to 139, then I could get it. Yes, Councilman Howrak?
Could we actually postpone this because the, the numbers I'm looking at from the agenda from, from May 16th actually have different numbers. I've got 25, 134, I just lost my page. I, I, I would just actually prefer that we postpone it because I wanna make sure that we're approving what was actually passed, and the numbers on the agenda had a total capital fund expenditure and revenue of 25, 134, 160. I think that the, the reappropriation needs to be corrected, and I think that the library needs to be corrected, but I just wanna be sure, so I would actually move to postpone until the June 20th meeting.
Moved by Councilman Howrak, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we postpone the approval of the minutes. Oh, you know what? That page that you sent us to was on your budget resolution, and we didn't pass that one. We passed Resolution B, which starts on page, um, isn't that, is that right? Wait a minute.
That's moved by Howrak and seconded by Fleming.
Yeah, that one is the one that, uh, Councilman Howrak that you brought up and Councilman Fleming seconded, and that one we didn't pass.
No.
Okay, and the one we did pass, just a sec, is found further on, just a minute. We did the, we postponed the budget, you have to go to, then we passed, we voted on the library, okay?
145.
Oh, it's on page 139.
No, no.
134 and 145.
Yeah. We did adoption of the budget, if you go to 144, that's the one we passed. And it has the, because it was Resolution B, it has the different amounts, some of them highlighted because that was the change from A to B. So the one we actually voted on and passed starts on page 144 and continues on through page, if I can get there. 149. That's the one we actually passed, Councilman Howrak.
Mayor?
Yes.
What happened was, I made the motion, Councilman Fleming seconded it, it was postponed, and so you can see the original motion on page 130, I think, five or something.
Right.
But when it was brought down, a completely different resolution was brought down. I think it was Resolution A.
That's right.
So if we can just postpone it for two weeks, we can make sure that we've got what we need here.
I'm just indicating that we had the two resolutions in there. We had the one that you proposed and the one that was actually in the agenda that we passed on B, for clarification for people. And you want the one corrected that was the one you brought forward because there were parts that were missing, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have a resolution to postpone on the floor? Any further discussion of that? Okay, the vote to postpone till the 20th, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, the next item requested was J5. See if I can open that one. Who requested this one?
Mayor?
Councilman Howrak? Oh, it's working now.
Mayor, yes, I just wanted to fill in the blanks, and I believe we're just reappointing Mr. Richnak and Mr. Miller, is that correct?
Again, thanks for bringing this to our attention. Tim should be the, Tim Richnak should be the, the SACRA rep, but we're proposing that Monica Ireland, the assistant to the manager, be the alternate, since Public Works no longer reports to Mr. Miller.
Okay, do you want to move that resolution?
Yes, Mayor, I will move, resolve that the City Council, Troy City Council hereby designates Tim Richnak as a SACRA representative, representative, and Monica Ireland as the alternate SACRA representative with terms expiring on June 30, 2012.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Howrak, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution of designating Tim Richnak as the SACRA representative and Monica Ireland as the alternate SACRA representative with terms expiring on June 30, 2012. Discussion, the vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. J11 is the item precinct 4 and 9 polling place relocation. Someone asked for that?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
This is kind of a never say never, except not in a Justin Bieber kind of way, but we remember, for those of us who were here, about four years ago, we changed all of the precincts' locations and cards were sent out, and I remember that time our city clerk, previous city clerk now, said, "This'll be the last time, we will never ever move these again." And I just bring this out because in fact, this, this is the second relocation for this group. They've moved from one church to another church, and this'll be the third church. So this really has been a lot of never say never. So I think we have to be cautious when sitting at the table and proclaiming that you'll never have to receive another card. I guess my question to our, our clerk at this point, Madam Mayor, would be, how will these folks be notified and will that be done in a timely manner? And if you'd prefer to send it in an email, that would be fine too, but.
I can, I can respond. We'll be sending them out new voter registration ID cards before the close of registration for the August election, which would be at the end of June. So we'll send those cards out as soon as this was approved. We'd be prepared to order those cards for them and print them and get them out in the mail.
And will there be notification at Seton, so then, go ahead?
We have traditionally in the past, when we've moved a polling location, we provide quite a bit of signage so that people understand that their polling location is moved.
Very good. And I think it's nice that the United Methodist Church has volunteered to host this, I think that's great. So I'll move the resolution, resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves the request to relocate voting precincts number four and number nine from St. Elizabeth Dan Seton Church to 80 East Square Lake Road to First United Methodist Church, 6363 Laverne, beginning with the August 2nd, 2011 special election, as recommended by city management.
Support.
Who was that? Oh, moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion. Just on a side note, my form came today for request for absentee ballot, came in the mail today, so, you said they were coming out from the county today. Opened the mail, there it was, so, but I think I'll be here. I won't get to use it this time. All right, anybody else? Okay, the vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. J14 was requested, the approval of extension of time limit for early retirement incentive for exempt employees. Somebody requested this?
Mayor?
Councilman Howrak?
You know, I certainly appreciate Mr. Nash's stepping up to the plate as the, I believe his title was Acting Finance Director. And, but my only concern is that, you know, making, you know, changing the dynamic or the metrics of the plan, if you will, particularly for one individual, that's, that's, that's my only concern. If we had planned, if we had crafted an, an early retirement plan that was more structured towards achieving a certain goal, then I would, you know, then I think that this would've perhaps fit into it, but with, with the way we're going about this, I don't think that this is really the right thing to do, so I have a little concern about that.
Anyone else on this item? Yes, Mr. Zerly?
I can just, like to justify my request for doing this, and that is that Mr. Nash, by agreeing to become the Acting Director of Finance and Administration, is doing so on probation, if you will. And Mr. Nash was prepared to take the early retirement option as well. And if it does turn out that Mr. Nash does not pass his probationary period, essentially he was doing the city a favor during the six-month timeframe stepping up to the position. Mr. Nash wanted the ability to essentially be able to take the early retirement incentive because otherwise, you know, because the window is closed, and I cannot guarantee and would not guarantee Mr. Nash continued employment in that capacity. That was the reason why.
Further discussion on the item? Someone like to move the resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Beltramini?
I'll make a comment and then I'll move the resolution. I, I agree with Mr. Zerly, I don't think anyone should be offered a promotion as they put in their retirement papers and then say, "Oh, by the way, and we're not gonna hold these papers," you don't get that. So I, I think in the interest of fairness, that's a job Mr. Nash has taken on that require different skills than what he had as financial director. So he needs an opportunity to either use those skills that were latent within him or learn them, or not, and he, he should not be punished for the "or not" through, "Oh, maybe we don't have a job for you," and, "Oh, by the way, yeah, you forewent your retirement." So this is the right thing to do, and I understand Councilman Howrak's concern about the structure of the program, but this is a people business, and it is the fair thing to do with people. Therefore, I will move the resolution that says, "Resolve that the deadline for Mr. James Nash to apply for Early Retirement Incentive Program, ERIP, which is currently being offered to classified and exempt employees, be extended from May 23, 2011 until the conclusion of the six-month review period for his promotion to Acting Director of Finance and Administration on, or November 23, 2011."
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini and seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion. I agree wholeheartedly with Councilwoman Beltramini's comments. I think that it is a fair, equitable thing to do that helps us and him and, given the situation, and I think that Mr. Nash will do a fine job. Vote, Mrs. Bittner, on this item?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. J. 15, oh, we already did J. 15. Okay. Counsel referrals, counsel comments. I'd like to begin on counsel comments with accolades for Mr. Lamorato. As we are all and everyone feel free to also make their comments. As we all know, Mr. Lamorato is retiring and leaving us for another position. But he has served us with great skill, dedication, and has the admiration of all that have worked with him over these years. Many of the things that we have achieved in Troy over his time of, what, 17 and a half years have been due to his skills and his way of working with people. We're going to miss him greatly, and I would be remiss if I didn't make some comments about that now at this council meeting. Now, I know we'll have an opportunity to roast him or whatever at another occasion. But I do think that I, for one, have been a great admirer of John and his abilities over the many years here at the city. Having worked with individuals who were on board before he came on board, I know that he was selected for the position because of his abilities. And I also saw him grow in his abilities over the years and demonstrate them even more. So we're going to miss you very much, John, but we also wish you well, both you and your And so those are my comments. Other council members?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I, too, have on my notes, kudos to John Lamorato for the service he's given us. But I do have some things that I want to speak about. I spent Friday in Ann Arbor at the Michigan Municipal League Board meeting, and it was fascinating to listen to them talk about the restructuring that they have done in the league through staff and implementing new policies and practices and services. They talked about having a digital coordinator, they're looking at virtual servers, Pano computers. And then, as I looked at and listened to the other board members around the room talk about things in their community, one was forming a recreational authority with four surrounding communities because they could no longer afford their own Parks and Recreation Department. And I'm not sure that we've looked at that kind of thing. Rochester Hills already has a recreational authority. I don't know if they would be interested in a partnership or if Sterling Heights or someone else who does not would be. Might be something we want to consider. I also want to give kudos to the Michigan Municipal League Lansing staff that was recognized by MERS as one of the most effective advocacy organizations in Lansing. Now, back to city business. Once again, we have on-off automatic sprinkler days. Whatever we're doing to get that word out isn't effective. So if we can beef up that communication a little tiny bit, it is what keeps our water rates lower. I know the first year we put that ordinance in, our rates stayed so very low compared to other communities, and this time it went up a little more. So again, that's one of those things that helps us all, so if we can beef up that communication. But again, John, you will be missed.
Councilwoman Beltramini, did these residential or business?
Residential, mostly.
Oh, they haven't reset their systems?
Oh, yes, they have, because they're watering every day, a lot of them.
Well, we've had such rain, I'm surprised they even need it.
I also want to discuss a couple of the reports when we're done.
Okay. Any others on counsel comments?
Right.
Mayor Potem Kerwin, I think? Oh, I don't know who, it was a tie here. She was going like this and you were speaking.
Well, it was just interesting that previously Councilmember Beltramini spoke about, "We're in the people business," you know, "and feelings and so on and so forth." Because John Lamorato's motto has always been, "I know if you go in his room, you'll see finance with feelings." Because that's really what fundamentally Mr. Lamorato has really shown for all of these years, that, yes, it's money, but we are a people business. That's what government is, is delivering those services. And he's always done it with such, I think there's no one more professional than John Lamorato in his approach to the job and the seriousness with which he looks at the impact of those numbers over and over and over again. This has clearly been a couple of trying years as we've moved from this, attempting to move to a rolling budget, attempting to move from looking at just one year and adopting those three years out. And it hasn't been an easy go, but I think it is, we've been well-served by John Lamorato in these efforts to try to move, looking with an outlook and trying to move to a true three-year budget and appreciate very much all of the work that went into that. I think I was saddened this year with the recognition, and I think it's just a fact, that we, as a city, won't be going for the most prestigious award because of not only the time and the effort that it takes, but so much else that builds into that. We've been just a handful of municipalities who've received recognition from all of those who look at our reports. And I'll just simply say that it really is a stab to the heart, frankly, to have people come up week after week after week and criticize the budget and the work that went into the budget. And know that those who work in the financial areas have recognized this city and John Lamorato and his staff, he always, so please, I include all the finance, fine finance people who work so hard to put together those careful documents in going forward. So as the mayor says, on behalf of the community at large, please know that that work has not gone unnoticed despite the fragmented few that we hear from who criticize that John, you've just done a remarkable job here. You will be missed, and we greatly appreciate all the work that you've done.
Councilwoman Fleming?
I just wanted to thank John as well for your years of service, John, and wish you all the best. And one thing I'm going to miss is that green tie that you always wear at the budget meetings we start to put, you know it's budget time when John wears that green money tie. So you might want to pass that on to Mr. Nash or tell him where to find one because it's worked well for you, and maybe he could use one as well. But again, just seriously, John, thank you so much and all the best to you and your family.
Madam Mayor, perhaps you should burn them, like you do the shoes after Dancing with the Stars, we could do a burning.
Councilwoman Slater, I think you asked for the floor next?
Yeah, I just publicly also wanted to say thanks to John, John Hell, as he's referred to pretty much at City Hall. Worked with John for most of his 17 years, and it's always been an honor, John. Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I said this to John, and I'll just reiterate it so everyone else knows how I feel. I've unfortunately probably been the person that's got to be around you the least, although I feel like I've seen you the most in the last year and a half that I've been doing this because you've been answering my questions and you've been answering all of our questions and answering the citizens' questions. And I'm very proud to have the opportunity to work with you, even if it was for a short time, and we wish you the best, hope that you'll come back and visit us.
Mayor?
Councilman Howarlag?
Now, it's my turn. You know, we've certainly had our moments, you know, some good, some not so good. But one thing I can say about you, John Lamorato, is that under your watch, the Finance Department has come a long way. Because I remember, I think you came in '92, '93, somewhere in that vicinity, or '94, it kind of starts to, but the quality of the reports, the financial reporting system, the systems in place that we have now compared to where we have been, oh my gosh, you have been in the head of a department during a transformational time. And I sincerely appreciate your service to this city and wish you luck in your future endeavors.
Okay, that's counsel comments. Councilwoman Beltramini wanted to talk about something in reports.
I did, two items. The memo N. 2B about the planning services, and again, I can't pull it up on my computer, but it talked about land use maps no longer being kept by section.
Something's on the table.
So how are we keeping them? Are we keeping them by city, by parcel? How are we keeping them?
Mr. Miller?
Madam Mayor?
Who I should call on? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Yes. What traditionally what the Planning Department had done is they maintained section maps of all the land uses, and those were hand-drawn maps. And basically, that function has been converted over to GIS. So it really has not been eliminated in totally because all that data is available on GIS as geocoded. In fact, there's actually more information, when you click on the parcel, you can get a plethora of information above and beyond what was available on a simple section map, which really was just the land use.
That's fine. My concern was that there was no longer the ability for someone to look at just a section without looking at the entire city, which, so if GIS is keeping it, that's fine. The other thing is the maps and databases are no longer being kept. Again, are they being kept through GIS? And the reason I ask is some of those daycare centers and the like that are in that list were originally put there as special uses. And if they're not being kept any longer with the Planning Department, what does that do to that? Ability to track that and maintain it and keep up with it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The maps which list those types of land uses are no longer being maintained. However, we can just go to the special use file and pull the special use file to deal with any specific business or property. So that information is not lost, it is available.
Is it being kept with the parcel as well?
Yes, those are physical files which are available.
And all of that information is by parcel or cross-referenced by use?
They are maintained by parcel, yes.
And by use?
Well, yes, because in the file it would have anything which occurred on there.
No, so what you're telling me is, no, there are no use files. So if I want to know if there are 25 or 125 daycare centers in town, there's no longer any way to find that information?
That is correct.
I'm not sure that's a good idea. I have grave concerns about that, Mr. Zerlik.
It's a concern.
So shouldn't we keep a list separate? Is there anything else?
That's why I wanted to discuss this, because I understand the loss of staff. I get that. But I also believe that to maintain order, safety, and community, there are certain things that we need to know where they are, and we need to know how many of them we have. And without those lists and databases being kept, we don't have that information. And I think it's unreasonable to expect someone next week or 10 years from now to go through 50,000 parcels and figure out who's doing what legally. That's my concern.
Couldn't there be a list and have it flagged and have it attached somehow? Mr. Zerlik?
Excuse me. Let me get with Mr. Miller and Savadant and see if we can resolve this matter.
It may be something that can be done through the GIS program, that then they all just pull up if a certain cell is filled or something, I don't know. So that was my concern. I'm glad that others share it, and I'm sorry you have this extra work, but it's easier than going through 50,000 parcels.
Well, and it's important to have that information when we're losing institutional memory with people.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not only at the table, but with staff, too. So it's important to have that data tracked. So thank you for bringing that up. Any other one?
Yeah, I did. Chief of Police, 903A was a thank-you note from Novi. The K-9 unit, Mark and Titan, went to do an inspection of Novi High School. I know that we don't do that here in Troy, and I know that we also have to be asked, but is that something we might want to pursue without officers in the school anymore for eyes and ears?
We can certainly talk to the school district again and make sure that they're aware that we would offer them that service.
I would appreciate that because I am concerned about some of the things that can happen without the discretion of an officer in the building.
That's kind of an invitation by the school system, so we're more than willing to work in partnership with them to get that done.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other items? Mayor Potem Kerwin?
In response to that, then I have an item, but at one time when I, my former role, we owned a piece of a nose. All Oakland schools owned a piece of the nose and used the sheriff and actually paid for that piece of the nose. So my follow-up question to that is, did Titan volunteer his time? Because the rest of the schools, and this was including Troy School District not that long ago, bought a piece of the nose so that in the event that we wanted a sniffer to come in, we were paying for that ability to do that. So did Titan work free?
No. It's part of Officer Cole's duties on a training day. I'm not familiar with the Oakland County piece of nose.
Well, I guess if we were going to offer something, I would offer it for whatever the going rate is for the nose because that's something that, at one time, school districts did pay for. And so I understand, Councilmember Beltramini, it's why not in our own backyard, but do be aware that this is a fee for service.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
Just as a piece of that, though, I think that if we had officers in the school, I don't see such a need, and we were willing to pay for the officers to be in the school. So I think this is a similar service at probably less cost to the police department.
I guess I simply wanted to point out that Troy Schools has, in fact, used sniffing in the past. It's not proclaimed, but that has happened. Madam Mayor, I wanted to speak to N. 5, and the chief is still up here.
N. 5, yes.
N. 5 is the, we had asked for a review of A&amp;M Towing, and I know that the chief wrote a report for us, and it was good to see the fine reviews about A&amp;M Towing. We know, we hear in the community, very good things about them, but it was good to see that as a report. Chief, would you like to comment?
Thank you. They continue to do a very good job for us. We're very happy with A&amp;M Towing. They're continuing to do good work. I appreciate you pointing that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to bring up N. 7. Mrs. Bloom, I was pleased to see the judge's ruling. I know the prediction is that it'll be appealed. My question and concern in bringing this up is that I know that you were concerned about having less staff after Chris left, but we've been cutting back on staff in all the different departments. So if there was some anticipation about looking to replace staff, that that probably is an item that should come to council to decide if, where we are on that. I know what it said in the ICMA report, but I just wanted to kind of get a feel for how we are on numbers and in handling the kind of cases and the number of things that we have, if you felt that the present staff is able to handle all of that.
Well, Mayor, I just, and again, my department is different than... Well, Mayor, I just, and, and again, my department is different than everyone else, because we report, I report directly to you, as well as the city manager, reporting directly to you. I did just last week go through the efficiency committee process, which is a process that we have utilized and is utilized for every other position in the city, and so I thought it was fair to, to go through that same process. And the efficiency committee did approve the replacement of Mr. Forsyth. So we were going to proceed with the Human Resources Department and start posting that and getting that filled. However, if you would like to overrule that decision, certainly you have that opportunity.
The reason that I, that I bring it up is, I don't know if other council members have, have concerns or comments on it at all or not. I just felt that in, in terms of looking at all that we've done in the city to, we have less people, and still expecting them to be doing more, and I didn't know whether it was fair to have the Law Department up to full staff when we haven't done that in any other department. Now, I know it's in, you know, you are the two people that, you know, report to us, and, and so that is one of the decisions, but I just thought we should have some kind of a discussion with council.
And Mayor, I just would like to point out, too, that last year at this time, we had nine persons in our department. We have six right now. So we have also shared in the sacrifices, and right now, it's very difficult to get everything done, so we really do need the replacement. I'm happy to show that to council and to justify why we do need to get at least one of those persons replaced if, if council so desires.
Would council like a report on that?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We'd appreciate that. So we could take a look to see. Okay, any other items people want to bring up on the reports?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Slater?
Just briefly, N-3B, letter of appreciation to Detective Don Tullock. I know a little bit about this case, and I can tell you that if it wasn't for Detective Tullock, this case would have never, ever gotten off the ground, and he deserves a lot of credit for this. And I've worked with him on some murder cases, and he is the best, and he should be recognized as the best. And if you could just pass that along, Gary, I'd appreciate it.
And it's true that his abilities in being the best are passed on in his family, too, because his daughter has received an appointment to the National Naval Academy and is accepting that and going there with a full ride, everything covered. And I was at the honors night at Avondale High School, and they asked to help present that tour along with two marine captains. And not only that, but then when they passed out all the cords and ribbons and everything, and of course she was getting everything, she had the longest list of all the things that were presented to her from all the other schools that wanted her, all the other things. So I would say that their daughters, for Don and Ellen, their daughter really is coming forward with all the things that their family has always stood for. So it's nice to hear you comment about his abilities, because he's very shy about, he won't tell you all the things that he's done. But this was really very special, so we should be very proud of their family. Anything else? Okay, then we're in adjournment.